Public safety, which, when you get right down to it, you are public safety.
We're on.
Okay.
All right, it's nine o'clock. On Tuesday, March third, twenty fifteen, as the board is meeting in special session on this day in the courthouse, meeting room number two, northeast corner, third floor, with all three members present. I entertain a motion for the agenda.
I move we approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
And a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Graybenbauer?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
And Patton?
Yes, new voice.
And next I have is the consent agenda, approval of the minutes, transmission session of February twenty seven, twenty fifteen.
I motion to approve the consent agenda as printed.
I second it.
And a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Graybenbauer?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
All right, move on line number three, secondary roads. Mr. Paul Guilantell. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Do you want, do you want to set the order of discussion, or do you care what order we talk about things in?
Let's just talk about things you got going on in the department.
How are the roads?
How are the roads, yeah.
Better than average.
Okay.
That's good.
Need to, need to get some miles run. I haven't been out a much, bunch lately, though, in the last couple of weeks. I'm optimistic for frost, because even though it's been really cold, I know we're not going to have deep frost like we had, you know, last year. So I'm hoping for a milder and quicker thaw, so we shouldn't see the frost boils that cause us to close roads. And I've been wrong before, but I really think it's going to be a better spring for frost boils.
We've had several times this winter where we've had those warm stretches where it's almost tried to come out.
Yeah, yeah, and I kind of get a update from the sign guys once in a while. It's been anywhere from four to twelve inches of frost for quite a while until this last cold snap, so.
That's it.
Based on just what they're doing for drilling holes in the ground for signs.
I guess I'm just going to start off with the questions. You know, the biggest thing that we're, we're quizzed on and asked about is the quarry bridge. If you could give an update on where we're at with that and how you're progressing with that.
I was able to get a meeting together with the, with the railroad, the bridge, the bridge maintenance personnel. The director of that department was out there, too. And, and had, we had Rod Vance from Calvin Burns out there with us as well, because they wanted to look at possible repairs, but make sure that they're proposing a repair that allows us to open the bridge. Because they don't want to spend money on repairs that don't do them any good as far as getting Calvin Burns to say, okay, we can, we can reopen. And they, they did present a plan for, for posting in some new pile in the areas where the deficient pile are at. And it'll just involve excavation down, down below the ground, so I mean, they'll either have to, have to heat the ground or defrost to get the frost out. And, because they were hoping to get it done before frost out, if they can. They, there's, I heard them say that, that they may have a contractor in there yet this month. My hopes are that by, by maybe the end of April, we can be looking at getting it open. The, the, the bridge maintenance, the, the bridge director that I was talking to was going to call me when he had a date for the work, so I could go out on site when they're, when they're doing the repairs. As soon as they have the work completed, I will get our inspectors back up to, to give it the once over, and we'll get it open immediately.
Well, if we get it open before the end of April, we should be open on that bridge before flooding would occur.
It would, I would be really hard pressed to believe that we could have a high water event in April.
Yeah.
But it, it could happen, but it's just not likely. I'm, I was happy to hear that they, they were going to use a contractor that they already have working for them over down in the Omaha area. So it was just a matter of relocating that contractor. And the only warning I would like to give out is this contractor doesn't work for me, so I can't make him do anything. He just is working for a third party, that's the Union Pacific. And so they're, they're the ones that get to tell him where to go and when to go there. But I, but I am optimistic that they want to get it repaired, and then after they get it repaired, my intention is to start the replacement plan and figure out what we can do to get the, to get the problem solved. Because the, the repair is going to be nothing more than a short-term Band-Aid that might last five years, it might last ten years, but it, and at the same point, when we repaired the pile, the superstructure of that truss is rusting and the section loss in the floor beams is, is getting worse and worse every year. And so that will be the limiting factor, even if the pile are perfect.
Did they have any discussion at all of possible removal and going to an at-grade crossing rather than over?
I, I was informed that the railroad never does that. That they, just from a standpoint of liability, they will not go from a grade separation to a grade crossing. And it really doesn't matter what the traffic is, because I asked them, because I'm like, listen, this is a access road to a small town. The likelihood of this traffic ever increasing from where it is today is slim. And they said that they're, they just, he, he assured me that, he goes, we would replace this structure far before we would ever go back to an at-grade crossing. So, and that was the heads up that Calvin Burns gave me, too, on his experience with the railroad.
So there is a possibility when that, that rusting of the superstructure finally does occur and enough is flaked off, that they may just out and out replace it.
Yes, and then there is another possibility that in my eyes would be almost the same as going to an at-grade crossing. Is about, what is it, maybe even a half mile to the west. There's an at-grade crossing that is really in land access for a landowner and a house there. Well, it would involve buying some right-of-way, but you could take that Yates and grade it right along, parallel with the railroad, and use that existing at-grade crossing. Now technically, you'd be taking all of the traffic that was going over the grade separation and putting it at a, at a, at-grade, you know, crossing. But he, he said that that is something that could possibly get through the, their crossing people, you know, as far as the liability control. It would involve upgrades of the, of the safety structures at that crossing, but possibility, yes.
Okay.
So it sounds like UP's actually on board in, in knowing the problem that we've got, or?
They, the UP understands the concerns of the quarry residents, and, and I think the quarry residents, and I have made it clear to them, and KCCI has made it clear to them, so we actually have a little bit of assistance from the news media on this one. And it, and it does seem to make them at least react, so.
Hey, whatever it takes to get it done.
I'm just, I'm happy that we have the right people that, that have been on site. The people that can make the decisions to get the work done have been there and seen the, the problem.
Where are we at on our other bridge projects that we may be doing this year as far as letting or actual construction times? And what bridges are they?
We've had the, it's the, the main ones are going to be those two box culverts up between Liskem and Highway fourteen.
Okay.
And we've had the pre-con. The contractor does want to get, get started, it sounds like, but there's, he, you know, in their, just a recent letting, since the letting that we had that, where we awarded the, the two culverts. Gus did pick up another couple of box culverts, so it's just going to be a matter of, they're going to look at their working days and see what their, the path they need to take to get all their jobs done in the allotted working days.
Okay.
So ours won't be, I don't think ours will be a frost-out start right now. It's, it looked to me like it would likely be starting after planting, which I guess to me that would be good, because it, it's really hard to do structures of this size without getting into one or the other of planting or harvest. But if they get started shortly after planting, there's almost no way those boxes aren't completed before harvest, because there's just not that many working days involved, unless we have a horrendous weather summer. They would be, I, box, box builders usually make their money by coming in and getting out, and working days are usually not an issue.
Okay, and we still got one bridge we didn't finish up last fall, right?
J-ten is completed. It's done.
It's done?
Down south of town on Parker.
Okay.
And it's, yeah, we, we actually got that open before, before winter set in. There's a late, late deck pour, but it's done.
Well, who's the, who's the contractor of the, of?
Gus Construction out of Ida Grove, I think, is their home.
How about giving us, okay, we're done with bridges?
No, not quite.
Okay.
Crooked Bridge, where are we at?
Yep.
We're, we need to get the, we're, we're in this environmental clearances right now. We're, we want to set a letting date, and we're shooting right now for a letting that's going to be likely October. And so I would not expect Crooked Bridge to start this construction season because of the late letting. But we will have the, the funds obligated, and, and it will be, it's just a matter of getting the environmental clearance to, to proceed with, with what we're doing there for right.
So hopefully we'll be construction in twenty sixteen?
Yes.
Okay.
So we're putting up one more year. Now we're up to about twenty-six, twenty-seven years.
I'm going to catch it, I'm going to catch it.
Once it's, well, not as bad as when they blacktopped the road in front of your house.
I know, yeah.
That, that'll probably be the one that'll push them over the edge.
Farm Bureau, they got on me about that.
Once we get that project let, it is going to get done. There's no going back once we let it to contract. So that's the, that'll be the last hurdle that we have to jump as far as getting it actually done. And if we can accelerate the letting date, I will, but it's, it's just a matter of getting it through the right state departments and get the right signatures on them.
You know, as long as we've been fooling with that, if we do have an opening of that, a grant, a ribbon cutting, we should have Dale Martin cut that.
Actually, that was on the list when I moved here, and that was in seventy-four. That's all I've been hearing.
That's kind of like get, get right around to it, huh? Okay.
Yeah, we haven't found any rare frogs or mice or something like that.
Hush.
It's not even that. It was, the historical side was, was mostly the, it was one of the earliest bridges that used that construction method.
Yeah.
It's not necessarily a groundbreaking design, but it was the method that was used to build it was, was, it was very early in that timeframe.
And you know, that held us back a little bit when we do put the new, new bridge in. Is the old bridge going to remain, or is it going to be demolished?
It is going to be crushed into a million pieces.
Okay, so our historical value is, is kaput.
We'll take a lot of pictures before we knock it down.
Okay.
There, there was a lady, Mrs. Grimes, who wanted that on the historical list. She has passed away, so she, she won't be pursuing that.
She won't be there.
Yeah.
Or depending on how you look at it, she'll be right there.
She may still have me problems, she's saying, yeah, yeah. We were friends, but.
But that, that one's, that one's definitely going to, going to get done. There's, there's another, as far as project development, we could spend almost every dime of bridge money up in that northwest corner of the county, just because we've got so many structures that are over Minerva Creek that are, that are just on their last leg, and it's a, it's just a rough part of the county as far as bridges go right now. We do have another historical bridge up there, too, that's just north of Clemens, that is a, it's an arch, and it's kind of falling apart, too. I mean, it's, but we're going to get, we think that that, that version of bridge, it's historical because of the design. There are several others in the state, and what we're hoping for right now is that they've been recordated, so that ours hopefully wouldn't need to be recordated if they already preserved the design with other structures.
Well, you know, the public is going to start expecting us to accelerate probably our bridge replacement and repairs, now with a new increase in the, in the road use tax, coupled with the increase in the change of the local option sales tax going to fifty percent towards bridges. So looking out past this, what might our bridges be in the next year?
We've got, we've got quite a few local targets. Our, that historical one, that D sixteen, I really do want to get rid of, and there's another one that's, that we call D twenty, that's nearby up there, but there's, the other, that's, that's on the shortlist, and the other bridge that's on the shortlist is the, the trust that's on Jessup. And I think it's, I think it's just north as, north of Stanley Mill.
Yes.
There's a trust on Jessup, north of Stanley Mill, I think, that is, I, I'm always looking to get rid of trusses, because every trust we have is a fracture-critical structure, and they, they require a more expensive inspection, and they are just more prone to catastrophic failure. And that bridge on Jessup has a deteriorating deck that I really do not want to put money into, so I want to get that one replaced before we have to put major money, just to keep it open.
Are we going to be able to replace any of those with box culverts, or are we going to have to go with the, back with a spanned bridge?
None of those three would be in the box culvert realm, but there are some that are, that are out there. Any, anytime I can replace a bridge with a box, I do.
One of the questions that came out last night, going off of what Dave was asking, how do you prioritize ridge, ridge repair, demolition? And also, how do you prioritize your roads and what, what roads are going to be?
The bridges have a couple of different factors that, that really prioritize. The first thing for me that prioritizes is if I have a bridge that's getting weight-restricted on a paved road. I don't like doing postings on paved, and so that, no matter what the posting is, if it's on a paved bridge, and that's, you know, we have it on North Center Street, but other than that, we don't allow bridges to remain weight-restricted on paved roads. And so that's, that's usually the first thing that I do, but it, it really comes down to worst first. But to me, a restricted bridge on a paved road is the worst. And then we deal with the, the bridges that have been lowered to the place where they're essentially worthless to the farmer. You know, a six-ton bridge or a three-ton bridge to any, any farmer out there, that's a worthless bridge. You can take the Buick across it, that's about it. So those, those tend to be high on the list. And then the other ones is we do have some, some rock routes that are fairly high travel, that, you know, we want to, it doesn't take a three-ton posting to get those up, up the list, because just for purposes of, of hauling grain and haul, and we've got a few of the bridges that are, I have close to Highway fourteen that end up being, if there's an accident, they're out of route where you get trucks on them. There's one on, there's a trust on Ridge Road that's on that list, just because it's a common route when there's an accident. But right now, it's a route that I can't have heavy highway, you know, travel on.
Speaking of, of bridges and prioritizing, we've had a lot of talk in the past on our Center Street four bridges by the, the water pumping station. We understand that the southern half of the Center Street Bridge is technically not in the city. Is there a way, and how are we coming along with the city admitting that that bridge actually does touch city property, so that we can qualify for some of these federal bridge monies?
I'm going to sit down with, with the, the city engineer, it's Justin, right?
Justin.
And, and discuss with him about what we have, because right, right now with that, with that south bridge, there is available grants that we would only be eligible for as the city being involved. And that south point, the south end of that bridge, in my opinion, touches the city limits, but I have to have the city agree that it does in fact touch the city limits. If it does, there is a very sizable grant that that bridge would get such huge priority points that it is just about a lock for the funding. So we would be able to get an excellent grant that would cover almost all the construction of that bridge.
Would that be administered to the city or the county?
We'd, we'd still take care of the administration and, and the inspection, because we're prepared to.
Yeah.
But the only other problem with that is we get this grant, we have to make sure that we can afford to do the next bridge to the north, because I need to do both of those two in the same construction season to get that, because we'll have that route closed. If we build those bridges one at a time, that, one of the routes is going to be closed every year for four or five years.
I think our discussion has always been do it in.
Two and two.
Two and two.
And, and right now, because of just, I haven't really talked about our federal funding for bridges, but we have what we call BROS bridges, which is federal bridge aid, but it's off-system. But that money still has to be spent on bridges that are on what we call a minor collector or a major collector. And we're, we're actually running out of viable targets that are on those federal eligible routes that we can use this federal bridge money on. But North Center Street is a, is a minor collector, and would be the first place where I would have a pretty good bank buildup, and I would likely have enough to fully fund that second bridge, if we get the grant money for the south bridge. The second bridge I can put on BROS. And we're going to program it as BROS in, in two years out, right now, just hoping that we can get that grant. And it's going to be a, a positioning in the program that is going to be purely based on accept, on, on obtaining a grant, and the BROS money will be there at that time.
And so the city's got a, a knowledge that it's touching the city property?
They're, they're going to. It's.
People look at me like I'm crazy when I explain to them that technically the southern half of that bridge is.
Not the southern half. I don't care if it's the southern half an inch.
Is not in.
If it, yeah.
They, they look at me and they say, but this side of the river is, is not county. The other side is the river.
And, and the other point that I need to check with our consultants is that when the new bridge is built, there might be three feet of the new bridge in the city limits. So it might, there's a gray area in there, and I'm going to get through the gray.
But doesn't, doesn't, when the, when the county line comes up to the city line, you're touching, aren't you?
Yeah.
But that's not where the bridge is. The, the county line and the city line where they touch is not necessarily where the bridge comes on this side of the river. That's the problem we're in.
It, it may be such that we need to hire a surveyor to actually restake the, the corporate limits, because we might not know, and they might not know exactly where that is.
And I'm, I'm sure the city would be very agreeable to some sort of document stating that, yeah, that's actually in the city, or change those corporate limits, if we can qualify for this grant.
Yes.
I mean, if we can literally get that bridge replaced without putting it on the backs of the property taxpayers, that's the kicker.
If we can somehow show that their liability would stop at that point.
Yeah, just so we could have an agreement, you know, they wouldn't have to maintain it. You don't have to maintain it, you don't have to, to contribute to the replacement of it. Just admit that that's where it physically is.
I think that's probably what hampered us finding out the details on this in the past, because they really didn't want to have to pay any por, portion of the bridge replacement, and I'm not after that at all.
And, and I know we can't make a decision here today, because that type of thing is not on the agenda, but I would say it'd be a pretty darn safe bet that this board would approve that type of agreement if you want to go forth and.
I think you need to consider, kind of consider it hard, really.
Yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Well, that's, that's just kind of prefacing where that's going to be programmed. I'm returning the program in two meetings.
Well, when you, when you do, it's been a long time since we had a city-county meeting. And this would be one of the excellent ways for us to, to, to get it out there in front of not only the people, but.
Before we schedule that one, I want to make sure I have a meeting with Justin.
Get the back channel done first.
Take your, take your negotiation bill.
Yeah, I'll take it to lunch.
Okay, there you go. We can't do that.
And you know, one of, one of the things that, again, was brought up last night, and we all know it, when it floods out there, what it does to Highway fourteen. And I know when we was out in DC, they, you know, we can't raise, really, corporation engineers won't, won't allow us to raise North Center Street, because of what it does to the, but, you know, what can we do? I mean, we got, we got to protect the safety of the people in Albion, you know, and the people north of the, of the, of the river.
Outside of, if we don't, if we don't get the grant and we still want to move forward with it, we need to give serious consideration to bond.
That, that isn't what I'm saying, is we, how do we raise North Center Street?
We, we don't get to raise North Center Street.
No.
We, our goal is really.
Well, that we're never going to change the flood plain, before the floodwater ends, or ends up out there.
It, that involves, raising North Center Street would involve, for every square foot that you block of this, of North Center Street of the floodway, you have to add that area to under the bridge area, because you can't backwater up further. So if we raise the road up this much.
You got to make a longer bridge.
You, you raise, if you raise North Center Street up two feet, you may as well put one mile-long bridge in, because that's the only, that's the only way you're going to get it through the feds to get it approved.
Well, what, what came at us.
Why not do it?
Because you still got to get a driveway off of your mile-long bridge to get down to the water.
What, what came at us last night at Farm Bureau was concern about getting product to market, specifically to JBS, that when we have a flooding event, it's not uncommon for us to have North Center Street shut down, also coming south out of Albion, at Timmons Grove shut down.
Three thirty.
At, at three thirty, and.
Fourteen, Main Street.
So, so we got Center Street, fourteen, and, and Timmons. You can literally, so getting product from the north to JBS, it almost becomes an economic development issue. They're having to drive a inordinate amount of traffic out of the way to get to it.
And that's, right now, my goals, my goals are not to have a flood-proof North Center Street, but I need viable, reliable bridges. When things are good. And I also need North Center Street to be a roadway that, once it goes underwater and the water goes down, it's still there. So we may do flood protection on the shoulders and on the, there's, there's a, there's a west shoulder right between those first two bridges going out of town, that that river does not want to have there. It wants it gone, and it wants to go straight across. And I've got to change the river's mind.
Let me know how that works, though.
I haven't had good luck with it so far. But it's, it's eating that shoulder away slowly, and at some point, if we don't protect that shoulder and arm it, it's just going to dig right into North Center Street.
Well, I would highly encourage you to have those discussions with the, the city engineer.
Certainly.
And see if we can get this rocking and rolling, so we can get at the point where we can start applying for these federal programs. Because we may get to the point where the largest bridge would just get paid for, not on the backs of the property taxpayer, which would be huge.
We have, we do have a little bit of time on our side that, that grant application is due in December.
Okay.
See, that, that's what helped us out up at, at Liskem, wasn't it? We had a, had that flood, and then because of the flood.
There was a, there was a culvert west of the bridge that was replaced on federal aid on.
Okay, so the bridge wasn't replaced on federal?
No, but it was in a, it was in one of the other bridge programs that was already funded before I got back here.
Okay.
But there was a culvert.
That culvert, yeah.
The culvert that was west of the bridge that was, I think, taken out by a flood.
Yeah.
Because just talking off of the top of my head now, that is a farm-to-market road, North Center. So if we came up with federal funding to do the mainspan bridge, the big one, the second bridge, we could use our lost money and farm-to-market for replacement of that?
We can use lost on any bridge we want. Farm-to-market is usually obligated by our resurfacing program.
Paving, yeah.
Our, our paving usually eats it up. We are going to see, thanks to the fuel tax, our farm-to-market, instead of being nine hundred and forty thousand, should be right in the neighborhood of one point two million, not quite one point two. It's going to go up around two hundred thousand dollars a year.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
So that will help, because our, we've been in a position lately where our resurfacing projects, we haven't been able to resurface quite the lengths that we've wanted, in the years that we've wanted. We've had to take a year off of paving once in a while to let the checkbook catch up in farm-to-market, so that'll help that.
Yeah, when you and I were talking yesterday, I think farm-to-market's going up a hundred and seventy-nine thousand. We got the transfer from towns of less than five hundred is about seven thousand, and the remaining five hundred and ninety-six thousand goes into just the general secondary.
But the, on that North Center Bridge, the short, the short term is going to be able to be to get that grant. Now, without that grant, there's still funding mechanisms, funding mechanisms we can use to get that, that paid for.
Okay.
But it might not be in, in twenty seventeen, it might be in twenty eighteen, you know, it might spread things out a little.
And again, as long as we can keep things moving, I think we, that's the direction we have to, we can't just.
We haven't talked about it for a while, and we need to get it back on the priority list. Because at one time you talked about the useful life of that bridge. We were at about six to eight more years.
And the second bridge, the second bridge, I'll be, I'm reducing to fifteen ton from a twenty-ton posting. So that affects the waterworks, because their fully-loaded trucks now need to come in from the north.
Okay.
And they're at eighty thousand.
Yeah, and we've got, we're allowed to special permit their, their fully-loaded trucks at forty tons to cross the bridge, center lining, slowing down to five mile an hour, no shifting, no braking on the bridge, and then they can go across it.
That's a little scary.
What it does is it takes the impact force out of the bridge.
Yeah, yeah, it's still, yeah.
And the other thing it's doing is it's a twenty-ton posted route that is actually twenty-ton posted for two vehicles. So if we're center-lined, that one load, that's the forty-ton, is the only load on the bridge at that time, and we're taking the impact out.
Do you, do you have to have personnel there when that happens?
No. We are.
It, it just a permit then?
Yes, and it's, and it's a permit that's issued to those licensed trucks and trailers. So I mean, they, it has to be the vehicle that they're telling me they're bringing across, too.
Okay, I never knew that.
How about we go on to paving projects for the season and possibly what's on the docket for the near future?
The first one this year will be Marshalltown Boulevard, going out from the city limits where they, where they ended that resurfacing east of the landfill. We'll go out past the landfill and right up to three thirty, across the, across the longest bridge in Marshall County. That will be a nice improvement to that curve down there east of the landfill. We're going to add a turn lane at the landfill, too, so that the, for the right-turning traffic coming out of the city, we'll be able to get into a right-turn lane and out of the travel portion of Marshalltown Boulevard.
So that goes to the east side of the bridge, or it goes clear up to the corner?
East side of the bridge, and then west of the bridge cleared to three thirty. East side of the bridge and then west of the bridge cleared to three thirty. It becomes state right there at that intersection with, with Marsh. So the end of the project will be right at the state right away.
Up to Don's Corner.
After that, our, our other hopes for this year are involving East Main Street, just it's gonna be a joint project with the city going out from Eighteenth Avenue out to the point where we ended just short of the River Bridge. It'll be a fairly short project, but that we're planning on Colden Place recycling and, and resurfacing there as well.
What are you doing, Ruth?
Not on the program yet. Don't think it's gonna go. Same deal. After doing it, we did a, I did an assessment of our paving, just as far as what needs to happen when. And we are gonna have to accelerate Old Thirty there between State Center and Three Thirty. It's, I originally wanted to wait three years on that and it's just not gonna go that.
Where's the way we're at now?
Old Highway Thirty, from State Center out to Three Thirty, there's about nine miles there. We're gonna have to do it in two separate project years.
We're gonna, we're gonna do the old highway from?
It's ours, it's our highway, Old Thirty. It's, what is it, Two Hundred and Thirty Street? I'm trying to think what the name of it is. And then we are also going to have to get, uh, Wallace into the program and getting, cause that does get quite a bit of, of traffic. I know Shady Oaks is, is tough, but it's not as bad as some of our other routes that are showing distress.
Is that, that, that's Old Lincoln Way too, isn't it? Old Thirty?
The Old Thirty section, you know, as it gets closer to Three Thirty, there's a part of, it's called Noel Way that goes up north. And both of those, it'll be in one project. We'll do both routes, the north and the south. It's a, it's an old paving grade that isn't graded up to the standards that we would use for grading today. But it, it's, it would, it would cost more than we can afford to, to do the regrade on it. So right now, we just have to take care of the paving that's in place. Part of the problem there with the paving is that it originally was only twenty feet wide. And it's currently paved twenty-two, cause we did a, we did a widening project back in the nineties on it and got it out to twenty-two feet wide. But it's a.
But you're still coming down to that bridge that's under twenty foot, aren't you?
Where at?
When you're going down, may, maybe I'm, I'm too far.
There's a, there is a culvert on Old Thirty that, um, has kind of a rough bump area. And before we do the resurfacing on Old Thirty, I do wanna get that culvert replaced and then that's just, you know, to get rid of the differential settlement that'll happen when, if we do the culvert and pave it right away, you'll have the bumps back because that settlement never happens consistently over a structure.
Speaking of culverts, how are we sitting on our culvert inventory? It seems like every spring we're, we're kinda scrambling if we got it up to where we need to be or?
We've got, um, we'll have, we'll have one order yet this spring and it will be just enough to get us to the, you know, to the midsummer here is what I'm hoping. We've actually got pretty good inventory right now. So it's gonna be a small order. I don't think it will involve everything that we have remaining in, in expenditures for culvert.
Okay. Um, how we doing on salt? Have we received all our orders and where are we?
About half of our order at this point. We're, we're still keeping our head above water as far as inventory on it, but, um, we'll get the rest of it in and then I'm hoping that by, uh, doing a, maybe about a fifteen-hundred ton order as soon as we can in this, in the next fiscal year, that we'll have a full, full dome coming into next winter.
Okay, and are we at, are we at the point where we've been helping out the other municipalities and towns?
We have let the other municipalities know that they can, they can come in and purchase from us and they have been. I have updated the price to reflect our current increases on cost of salt and sand.
Okay.
So, uh, this fifteen-hundred ton will be for next year, actually, then, next winter?
Yeah, our salt dome, we can usually store, we can store about four thousand ton in there. And it hasn't been full for quite a while, but if, if we can go into a winter with a full dome, I, I really don't foresee a winter that would require us to use all of it. And usually in most winters, a full dome would get us through two winters if it had to.
So, uh, you're gonna try and get that at least ordered?
It's.
Before fall?
I, we're, we're still gonna bring in a thousand ton yet, cause we had two thousand on order. And I'm hoping that we'll have enough left if the weather allows that beyond that thousand ton, fifteen-hundred ton will fill us up. I'm hoping. It may be a two thousand ton order, but we can decide that when the time comes and what the price quote is.
Going back to the topic of, of updating our pricing, uh, we've spoke before about our, our fueling station and that we fuel for the city and some other municipalities. We're gonna end up having to in the, in the near future do some repairs and, and possibly some, uh, replacement on that. Where are we on maybe increasing our fees so that when we have to do that replacement, we've got it covered? We're, we're, we're performing the service for the other municipalities, but are we getting enough upcharge on the fuel that we're selling to them to be able to include some of the replacement of our equipment?
I know we're not getting enough on the upcharge. Right now, we're upchar- our upcharge for fuel is a, is a nickel a gallon. And I, I, once I total up the gallons and look at what our average year really ends up being for revenue, I'm gonna compare that to what we've actually put out in expenditures just to maintain that system and keep it operational. We've had some struggles this year on, on hardware. Electronic issues, they've been, things that we've had, been able to repair at least, and I haven't had to go full replacement on, on the console or anything else. It's still expensive equipment. It just gets more and more expensive because of our, our, you know, double wall containment and leak detection and, and everything that has to be done. I, I wanna have real information before I increase the, the margin that we get. My, my gut feeling is, is that it needs to be ten cents instead of five cents.
Okay.
Just, just in conversations that I've had with people who actually run gas stations.
Okay, but where are we in actually implementing that?
I'm, I'm just gonna be collecting the, the actual information first, so that I have the real information to back up what I increased the margin to.
All right, you know, we gotta be able to sell it to the other municipalities, but at the same time, they can't expect us to be just turning dollars and assume all the costs of everything it takes to provide that fuel to them.
We don't have any agreements with them, so I'm gonna assume that even with the margin, that it's more beneficial than going and getting a gas card and going out to the, to the station. Now, in this town, I'm pretty sure that's what the DOT does. They, they get it out there at fourteen and thirty, you know, and that's, that's where you see all the orange trucks filling up. They don't have fuel over here on Lincoln. So it's something that, you know, the other entities are welcome to, you know, they should look at and see what the most beneficial option is for them.
Well, being the new guy, I got a dumb question. Do we pay, uh, state tax?
We do on the Gasahole. We do not on diesel. We get it refunded to us and we have to apply for the refund.
Okay.
So we do not put any portion of that tax into what we pass through to the, to the other entities.
So all our, all our diesel trucks and our graders and all that stuff then, it's, you know, otherwise it's just, it's like, it's like send our, our state things paying state property.
Right, and I'm not, I'm not sure exactly on the reasoning on why we don't pay the diesel, but we do pay the Gasahole. We pay the twenty-nine cents.
But then we get it back.
We do get it back, yeah.
I, I just curious, I never even know.
You know, there's another foible for the state. We're gonna charge you the tax, we're gonna give it back, but we're gonna hold on to it for a while and make you apply for it. Why make every entity go through the system of applying for the tax that they're gonna give back to you?
That's just an old system, Dave. They, they used to make the farmers do that too.
Okay.
It, it seems like it would just be busy work for somebody that's marginally.
Operating capital.
Yes.
Cash flow. It's like dealing with a loan shark, you're gonna pay the vig.
Well, that's kinda hard, Dave.
I'm never, I've never been a real fan of the state. That's, I don't hide that.
I'm learning about the, the fuel tax, you know, process as far as what happens when it changes because the last time it changed, I was a junior in high school. And, uh, so I wasn't really paying attention to what happened then. But the, it sounds like the way that the increase in tax gets implemented is by the vendors actually purchasing the bulk gas at the terminals. So there's a short time here where it's gonna be kinda phased in from what I'm understanding from the DOT. And the big, the big vendors that have a lot of inventory and a lot of gas may not have to purchase the more expensive gas for a little while. But they did have to start charging the tax on the first. So there's a short time where they actually get to get the tax, but they're not even paying the tax because they're using it on inventory that they didn't have to pay the tax on. Now, the reverse is true too. If the tax would ever go down, it'd be the same deal.
What world are you living in?
It's not, it's not a world I can really imagine.
No.
But what I'm saying is, is that it doesn't just automatically translate to revenue in our road use tax fund. It will phase in. We're not looking for much increase in April. We're hoping that we start seeing something in May. And maybe the increase is fully implemented by June, but it's definitely gonna have a, an impact on fiscal sixteen.
You know, I would say when you, when you finally get the answer, when we're gonna see some of that increased revenue, we should probably get on order in those pups.
Yeah, yeah, I don't wanna spend the money that I don't have. But I, uh, and right now that I think the pups would be delayed a couple of months anyway, just getting them on order.
Okay.
But the other thing that we would have, as soon as we know we have the, the funding, is we can look at the used market. Sometimes they do come online used.
And we, we did, uh, bring up to Farm Bureau last night that you were going to get into hauling your own rock with our own manpower and, and be able to control where it's being placed down better than we had before and hopefully give a better product for, for less, less money.
We've had really good luck with, with using the pup with our, our newer trucks that we're getting a little extra horsepower in. And we've had a lot of experience with one driver hauling the tons that it used to take two drivers and two trucks in Marshall County to haul, so. We can have four operators, pretty quickly, we can have four operators that can make a hundred ton round to the quarry. And that will, that'll put a lot of rock down in a day.
When we, when we have put it out for bids, how many tons do we put down in a, in a given year?
I do not have that. It's gonna be on the order of sixty, sixty-five to eighty thousand ton.
Okay. That's a lot of hundred ton, hundred ton trips.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And we're, and we are gonna continue to utilize local haulers, you know, as the, the stopgap because I know that we can't have the hauling capacity to haul it all right away. But portions of the county, we will still utilize local haulers and then we will slowly take as much as we can. Our goal this year is to take as much of the northwest as we can and use local haulers in the rest of the county.
And northwest will come from where?
We haven't, we've got quotes from a couple of different sources. We do not have a final on where that's gonna be. We're talking to, to Gurkies up north of the county line and, um, and likely Ses- Sesford and Martin Marietta are both in, in, uh, fairly close haul ranges, so either one of those and our better price right now is Martin Marietta. So it's gonna be, we were just gonna have to analyze whether the closer haul from Gurkey translates to a cheaper price than going down to Ferguson to get it.
Cause we kinda told them last night at Farm Bureau that it would be, it's an advantage for us now we can kinda spot gravel where we, where the, yeah, when you have the outside vendor come in, he, he's just gonna drop it when he can or whenever the contact says he can.
We had some input on where, but the, the tonnages, we still had to basically stick with what we, what we contracted for. This way, when we're hauling the rock, we're putting what we need, right where we need it, when we need it.
Down at Ferguson then, the rock down there, uh, i- is that a fairly hard line?
It's the best we have in the county, as far as the, as far as the hardness.
The, uh, the, the, the rock at, at Gurkies or Gifford, um.
Historically, historically softer, yes, and.
Doesn't last as long.
And there's, and I've had several people say, he's been saying it for years, but there is a harder bed that he's getting into there.
On the west, on the east side of the river.
And I've had people tell me that what they've gotten out of there in just recent history has been a different color, it's acted a little different. So he is getting into some better material, we think. We have not, uh, tested it to find out if that's really the case. But that's going into what we're saying as far as the cost difference too.
Sure.
Is it, is it cheaper? It's cheaper, but it might just be because it's cheaper.
I just, um, you know, and I'm just a farmer to call, but the stuff we put in our yard, uh, that we used to get from Gurkey, we had to replace it every year, just in our yard, because just our tractor.
It would just break down.
Break it down into nothing. But now I do know that on the east side of the river, that people are saying that that's, you know, that's that same spot, but it's harder. But I s- I'd certainly, I, I certainly wanna prove it first.
I'm gonna get, I'm gonna be able to get the information from the DOT because he's been wanting to provide some spec rock for shoulders to the DOT too. So when he does that, they will do abrasion tests on it and, and we'll really know what he's got there from the DOT.
Just passing on a comment, uh, in speaking with Bobby Shomo on work comp, our insurance carrier is very pleased with what you've done as far as bringing the safety issues to your, uh, your employees underneath your care. We're, we're having a, a pretty good work comp year from your area.
Okay.
Keep it up. If there's anything you can do to ratchet that program up to help keep our work comp rates down.
I'm trying hard. I'm not gonna say that it's because of what I did, it might just be good luck, but I'll take whatever.
You know, hey, I'll take luck. Any, any, I don't care what it is, but, uh, right, right now, we're, we're enjoying, knock on wood, not a bad work comp mod.
Okay. I know it takes years to get it the way we want it.
Yep, but we, there definitely have seen results out of your area, so keep encouraging whatever you're encouraging or any of the safety training programs. I think I have gone through every single one of my notes that I needed.
Yeah, I'm good.
I can talk to you about trucks a little bit. We've got, we've had kind of a rough winter on, on engines in our, mostly been our single axles that have been giving us trouble. But just last week, we had, um, an injector just break off and before that piece that's about as big as the end of that pen got done going through the cylinder and out the turbo, it, it did about twenty thousand dollars worth of damage to this engine. And, um, it's a vehicle that's, it's in the mid-range as far as the age in our fleet, so we really need to have it operational. But we looked at pricing and getting, uh, getting, getting the repairs and the parts, and it was gonna be right in that neighborhood of twenty grand to get it back on the road. And when we looked at our fleet, we've got another single axle that is nearly the same age that is the, uh, the one that we tore apart and converted to the tractor to pull our new Neville trailer. And then when we, when we used it, we found out that it didn't quite have the horsepower to pull the, our fully, like a full, like a maintainer. When it was loaded to what was legal, it didn't have the horses to really get up the hills that we needed it to. So we acquired the tandem axle tractor for that trailer and it works great and, and it's gonna serve us well for a long time. But this other tractor we've got, we looked at the age of it and what it is in the model, and it's the same truck as this number fifty-six that, that had the injector issue. And when we went and checked to see where we were at with, it's, it's got only about seventeen thousand miles on that engine because it had been repowered once already. And we're gonna take that engine out and put it in fifty-six to keep fifty-six on the road with minimal cost. Because it's a tractor that we don't really need to have as far as hauling that Neville because we've replaced that tractor. And we looked at him on the engine numbers and they're only about two months apart on when the engines were built. So it's gonna be just a, an in-and-out swap on this tractor and then we'll take this number fifty-three that we're taking the engine out and, and scrap it because we've already scrapped about half of it anyway. We'll save everything on the power plant that we can to use for parts on the other, on the other vehicles and Gurkis will get the rest of it.
So are we hearing a request for another single or double tandem axle here?
We know we need them. We, we do need them. It's just that there's, what, what we're doing is we're taking two trucks and making one out of it because we don't wanna, we, we could invest the twenty, twenty thousand in fifty-six and get it back on the road. But when we looked at what fifty-three was and if we decided to sell that tractor, we might get eight or nine grand out of it. So we can scrap it, take the engine out and, and be money ahead getting fifty-six back on the road. So that's what we're gonna do with that, but it's just.
There's probably not a lot of difference in time, is there, between fixing the engine and replay and?
It, it was gonna, it's gonna be a, a couple of week project.
Yeah.
So, yeah. But we're just, we're really hurting on parts right now, and so it will save us a lot on having to buy parts because we're using parts that we have for the most part. The other single axles that we had trouble with, thanks to the amendments that I did, we're gonna, we're, we're getting those back on the road, and so we're, we're back to having spare, spare trucks on the, on the fence.
Okay.
Because we were a couple of weeks ago at the place where we were using everything we had running. Motor graders have been behaving lately and we're, we're still, in talking with Brad and Jim, we're still concentrating on trucks. I know we still need another excavator, but that's on the back burner for right now. We are not intending on renting a larger excavator this summer at this point unless a, uh, a large pipe or two comes in, you know, on our radar.
Okay.
We just, we've just got quite a backlog of drives and smaller crossroads that need to be done and we can use our current excavator for those.
Cause you've done that this last couple of years.
We've rented different sizes based on what we, what we saw that we have to do and there, there isn't the large, the large pipe work that's pending right now. We usually have to rent something larger if we're gonna put a seven or an eight foot, you know, pipe in. Just cause we need the extra depth capacity.
Geez, we've hit just about everything this morning. Culverts, bridges, salt, sand.
Okay, and the new guy, I, I appreciate you coming in and explaining this, uh, it really helps to understand what's going on.
Well, it's been a while since we've, you know, we've been so darn busy with the budget and the changeover of the auditor and Paul's stuff and Jarrett's stuff, we've kinda fallen behind a little bit on our, our updates on department heads and.
I can't remember when the last one we did.
I for one would really like to get back in the saddle on, on, on three main ones being
Twenty thirteen.
Uh, you and, and Paul and, and IT.
Well, I, I like it because it keeps you guys in the loop and it helps me get my thoughts organized too on what my.
Well, it keeps you on the hook too.
Talk to him, yeah, we, we've got him under.
I can't be taught.
Okay, you know, you gotta make rest. This is your chance, this is your chance buddy, thirty seconds.
That's the list, that's, and I just, and I made this list after we started the meeting.
Well, your list is, your list is a lot shorter than my list.
Lot of prep work there.
Well, the thing is, I, it's, I'm just going off what I, what I know, there's.
And as Dave, Dave said, thanks for doing that safety, being involved in the safety program.
We're nowhere near done, but it's, it's, a big part is getting rid of, getting rid of stuff.
Your crew is doing a good job in keeping, keeping that in.
Something really out there. Remember we had the gentleman that was complaining about the cattle crossing signs and we, we made the comment in public that the trail cameras were gonna go up? Have we had anything come back from him since we made those comments?
No, but I've, I've thought of a couple of different strategies on what we're gonna use on that if those signs decide to, to leave again. One was the next time we have to put them up, we're just gonna build them some fold down signs and take them down and give them to them and say, put these signs out when you're gonna cross with cattle and otherwise keep them in your shed and this is the last set I'm buying.
Cause he said he uses it so seldom.
Yeah, yeah, and I don't know if he really does use them that often, but this way, he would have the signs and he could put them out when he wanted to use them. Um, and then plan B would be, and I had, I can't believe I never thought of doing this, but you can go out with those signs and just cake the whole post with grease, just grease the heck out of it, grease the backside of the sign. Sign works perfect, you just don't wanna touch it for any reason, cause it's got quarter inch of grease on it. You know, and that, I'll bet that would keep that sign there.
You know, I got my son to behave at Christmas time one year, cause I threatened I was gonna grease the roof, so Santa couldn't land. Motivation.
Your, your house is an interesting example of what not to do, modern living, yeah, yeah.
We could have run sitcom.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We'll, we'll open up public forum, now this is time we'll set a sign for the public to make comments.
No comments?
Topics of county business, other than those listed on the agenda, no action will be taken to any of these items, we got two public, well, not public, two department heads. Anybody wanna say anything?
How about the second half of the game last night?
Next item is adjourned.
Eighteen points in the first half, fifty-nine in the second?
That's crazy, yeah.
Wow.
They went from the worst half in their, in their school history to the best half.
I think they should've called a technical on Fred Hoiberg in the second half just for beating up on the other team.
That sounds like someone from Wisconsin, that's. The next special session is March seventeenth, twenty fifteen at nine AM. All business to be acted upon at that session should be submitted to the county auditor and recorder's office or the bar to supervisor's office by Thursday, March twelfth, twenty fifteen at one PM. There being no further business, coming forward the board, our meeting is adjourned at nine fifty-six. Thank you guys very much.